Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the August 2024 Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for being here. If you are joining us this evening to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please use the signup sheets located down front at the podium. Ms. Lopez, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in the Capitol to be opened by the NJSA 10-04-6 et cetera. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 5th, 2024. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open House Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that we make a statement at this time.
Where is Councilor Gagliardi? My guess is he's probably trying to park his car. But we are able to start a meeting without Councilor being present.
Okay, so the meeting today, all the public, with all respect to me, you said back in the meetings, in my opinion, it's not, and I said we ask council, okay?
Great. Thank you, Ms. Waiters. Let the record show that Mr. Gagliardi has not yet joined us at the podium. Ms. Lopez, please continue.
The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV channel 787 and iOS channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is vital that we live in electronic age with computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of devices necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if need to conduct personal access.
Please rise for the pleasurable audience.
With the presence of the flag of the United States of America, the majority of the public who stands on the nation under God, we address all the important things that justice for our.
Ms. Lopez, can you please call the board?
Ms. Angley. Ms. Katnadori. Ms. Alair. Ms. Delatorre. Mr. Bronya. Ms. Carter. Mr. Clifford. Ms. Norwood. And Ms. Ger.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Dr. Johnson, do you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
At this time, I would like to forward a superintendent's report regarding the launching of a new five-year strategic plan. So I'm just going to, just to, um... So the Hoboken Public School District is going to be embarking on a comprehensive journey to develop a new five-year strategic plan or a guiding document that will guide the district and all district actions and decisions in the coming years. Central to the process is a revision of the district's vision and mission statements along with the establishment of strategic goals. Two of these goals will be particularly significant. One will be anchored in the portrait of the Hoboken Public School graduate, which will define the skills and attributes our students should possess upon graduation, and the other in the district's long-range facility plan, which will ensure that our educational facilities will support these aspirations. Tonight, I am going to officially announce the launch of the strategic planning process. At this meeting, here this evening, I am going to outline the steps that are going to be taken to develop the plan that is going to guide the district over the next five years, emphasizing the critical importance of revising the district's vision and mission statements to reflect the evolving needs of the community. I'm going to detail how the process is going to be collaborative, involving input from a wide range of stakeholders, and I'm also going to explain a bit about how it will be structured around the dual pillars of the portrait of the graduate and the long-range facilities plan. Announcing this this evening will set the stage for the extensive work that's going to follow, ensuring that all of our actions will be aligned with the long-term goals of preparing students for success in college careers and life, while also addressing the physical infrastructure and needs of the district's facilities. Those of you who might not know, the portrait of a graduate is a visionary framework that's designed to articulate the essential skills, knowledge, and attributes that our students should embody by the time they complete their high school education. This portrait is not just the reflection of our aspirations for student success, it's actually a comprehensive guide that will inform and shape every aspect of the educational experience within the Hoboken Public School District from kindergarten to 12th grade. Developing collaboration with Patel for Kids, a national leader in educational innovation and transformation, the portrait of a graduate is the result of extensive research, stakeholder engagement, and a deep understanding of the evolving demands of the 21st century. So as we prepare our spitting's currently increasingly complex and interconnected world, the portrait of a high school graduate is going to serve as our nearest star, ensuring that our district's curriculum, instructional practices, and student experiences are all aligned with the skills and the competencies that are required for successful modern error. The portrait of the high school graduate encompasses all kinds of key components, such as representing critical aspects of holistic development of students. So for example, it's going to include certain aspects of academic excellence, college and workforce readiness, global competence, social and emotional intelligence, civic engagement, and also innovative and creative innovation. And among these competencies, we're also going to look at things that students think are going to be, that will make them successful for the future as well. The goal, all of these goals are going to be outlined, and we're going to build upon them to determine the programs and the curriculum that will be needed in order to nurture a graduate who will possess all of these competencies and characteristics. The portrait of the graduate is deeply integrated and will be deeply integrated into the district's strategic plan and all of its initiatives in the next five years. It will serve as a guiding framework for the development of our curriculum, our instructional strategies, and our extracurricular programs. By aligning our educational practices with these attributes that will be found within the portrait of the graduate, we're going to ensure that every student is on a path toward achieving their potential. Furthermore, the portrait will also inform the district's policies and decision-making processes, ensuring that our mission to prepare students for success in college careers and in life will be reflected in every aspect of our educational system from kindergarten to 12th grade. Will also serve as a benchmark for measuring the effectiveness of our programs and initiatives, providing us with a very clear understanding of how well we are preparing students for the future. And in summary, the portrait of the Hoboken Public School graduate is more than just a statement of educational descriptors, it's a commitment to fostering a learning environment where every student can grow and thrive and achieve success in an ever-changing world. It's going to represent our dedication to providing an education that's not only academically rigorous, but also deeply relevant to the lives of our students and the lives that they will lead after graduation. So that's one key element that will anchor our new strategic plan. The other key element is the long-range facilities plan. The long-range facilities plan is a comprehensive plan that's mandated that's mandated by the New Jersey Department of Education. It's required by all New Jersey school districts to assess and plan for future needs of their educational facilities. For the Hoboken Public School District, updating the long-range facilities plan has become a critical priority due to steady enrollment growth and the aging infrastructure of three buildings in particular that were constructed prior to 1910. These factors necessitate the preparation for new initiatives in terms of renovations and even facilities projects and potentially new construction to secure safe and effective school buildings. We also need to look at securing funding to address all of these challenges, and whether it be through funding with the SDA or through a referendum, these are things that have to be discussed in the process of upgrading and updating our long-range facilities plan. The long-range facilities plan will outline necessary improvements, expansions, and even in construction, ensuring that the Hoboken School facilities are equipped to support both enrollment growth and the educational programs and experiences that are envisioned in the portrait of the graduate and the new strategic plan. The strategic planning process will be a collaborative effort. The superintendent, administrative team, the entire Board of Education will all lead parts of the strategic planning process, focus groups, solicit impact, input, and gather feedback while drafting goals of the document and ultimately publishing and final strategic plan. Happy to listen to the collective thoughts and aspirations and dreams of both internal and external stakeholders, including students, staff members, parents and guardians, community members, collective officials, and those professionals that come back to City of Hoboken. This is sincere hope of the Hoboken Public School District, but this new five-year strategic plan will serve as our nearest star. So the new strategic plan that we are going to develop has a pretty detailed timeline, including the different phases that will start. It's already slowly begun to kind of roll out. In our early administrative team meetings, we've begun to unpack things like the mission statement and the vision statement, as well as some of the goals. But September 9th is when we really kick the new strategic high up off, and the whole planning process will run through February 11th. We've had some Board of Education members who, you know, provided some really good insight and said, kind of slow it down, and let's make sure that the process is steady and as collaborative as possible. So we'll take a good amount of time to ensure that we do that. The process will run from September 9th through February 11th, giving us some key points in the process where we will host focus groups, we will import out at Board of Education meetings. And so in all eight phases, you will see things from internal and external stakeholder surveys to preparation of draft documents. You will see also the conducting of focus group meetings. You will see the, I mean, posting of updated draft documents for people to provide input and additional feedback on. And then you'll also see the reporting how some of that information had probably reported with Education Communities as well. So there will be a multitude of options for community input and feedback throughout the process, with the hope that by middle of this school year, in February, at the February 11th Board Meeting, we will have a final strategic plan to present out, which puts us right at the perfect point in this school year in the budget process to also link the goals in that strategic plan to the preparation of the 2025, 2026 school year budget, so that we not only are strategic planning goals done, but also aligned to the following year's budget. So in the packet that you receive, there's a kind of a draft document that will be finalized, that will be posted on our website, and there's also a press release in there that you can take a look at. We can revise it a little bit, and that will be released to our parent and regarding the community, our teaching staff, and our faculty, our support staff, as well as the community, so that everyone's aware of the entire strategic planning process.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We'll now move into committee reports. First, oh, sorry, Ms. Lopez, do you have the business of the...
No.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Bronya and Corrector.
Okay, the Curriculum Committee met on August 22nd. In attendance, along with myself, Ms. Katnadori, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley. In terms of the consent agenda, there are three items the committee would like to review with you. They are 9.01. This requires a vote of approval for the district's professional development plans, which are obviously developed within the district, but they do satisfy, through our approval and our vote, the state mandate. I've sent, I've sent these out in the notes to you. Just note that, you know, in general, there are overlays in terms of our approach, which is we embed into all of our development plans. The district's emphasis on literacy, the betting diversity, focus across the entire learning curriculum, and social and emotional development. 9.2 is the district's mentorship program. It requires an affirmative vote, and the committee recommends an affirmative vote as such. I've sent you a link to all the plans. There's the Mentor Plan, and then the Professional Development Plan at the district level, and then all of the five schools, Grand Conner, Wallace, Middle School, and the High School. And then lastly, you'll see 9.3 is about approving, ongoing approval of field trips, and these need our ongoing review and approval. I'm just going to add from non-action items, a couple of items here that I took in the notes. Please. So recently released from the superintendent in the SNOR is Governor Murphy announcing the Promising Practices Project to accelerate student learning. So this is something that is being done at state level, and we're very pleased to note that Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School has been selected as one of the standout institutions to participate. Additionally, I believe since October 2nd, we are going to have a great opportunity in the community to have a viewing and a Q and A session with Kent Rochon, who is the Director of the Documentary TIL. If people, obviously that's a serious subject, but one that, you know, should be open to the community, and the request will also be in SNOR, so if you want to participate, that will be the place to go. So thank you, everyone, and there are three items to vote on.
Thank you, Mr. Bronya. We'll now go to Facilities with Mr. Delatorre.
Good evening, everyone. Facilities Committee met on Thursday, August 22nd. In attendance were Johnson, Ms. Caligie, McGurk, Alara, Sukanya, and myself. We recommend all items here for approval. Do have a few updates. New security doors will be installed in about two weeks, Connors and Wallace. These are stores we're supposed to install earlier this summer, but shipping delays have not yet arrived. New safety surfaces at Wallace and Connors will be completed after school opens, with the work being done on the weekend due to contractor delays. Thanks to the generosity of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, the concession stand at JFK Stadium will be retrofitted and will be supplying new appliances. Based on a final engineering report, scaffolding at HMS will come down across school starts, which is majority of it. Any areas not to be influenced, the scaffolding will be replaced by a new. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delatorre. For the Finance, we go to Ms. Khan.
Thank you. Good evening. The Finance Committee met on Friday, August 23rd at 10:00 a.m. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Katnadori, Ms. Angley, Mr. Putfield, and myself. Agenda items in Section 11 were reviewed and discussed, and we recommend all for approval. I'd like to thank all the individuals who donated to the Passport to Learning After-School Program under 11.10. And then under 11.11, I'd like to give a huge thanks to the Hoboken Public Education Foundation for the total amount of $504,000, $504,000, to fund the many initiatives and programs, as you can see, listed. So thank you again, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Ms. Katnadori, do you have a governance report?
I do. Good evening. The Governance Committee met on Thursday, August 22nd, 2024. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Putfield, Ms. Norwood, Ms. McGurk, and myself. The committee discussed the agenda and recommends all agenda items for approval. As this is typical of the year, we have a number of agenda items, including faculty and staff, including reservations, modifications, various appointments, and items related to training and workshops, specifically today's agenda includes the following items. From 10.1 all the way through 10.8, and including 10.16, 10.17, those are a number of different recisions or reservations of reservations from appointment from a certain staff, as well as different appointments and modifications, and also transfers for the quickly approaching school year. 10.09 and 10.10 includes the appointment of certain faculties to serve as lead teachers for the district's Passport to Learning Program, as well as a blanket appointment of all eligible faculty and staff in connection with that program for the 24, 25 school year. 10.11 through 10.13 approves various appointments in connection with the district's theater program, including what can only be described as a wealth of volunteers in connection with that program and our laser programs. We would like to thank all of our generous volunteers for their time and efforts to make sure that our arts programs are supported and successful. 10.14 through 10.15 is approval of staff in connection with current summer programs. 10.18 covers the approval of Dr. David Kovacevic, I hope I'm saying that right, as a physician for the high school athletic programs for this school year, for the coming school year 24, 25. This position is an unpaid position, and we thank Dr. Kovacevic for his service to the district. 10.19 is the approval of substitutes. 10.20, as well as 24 through 25, cover the approval of workshops, training, compensation, and conferences to be attended by our staff and faculty. 10.22 covers the payment of both qualitative and quantitative merit goals to Anna Mary in exchange for her invaluable service to the district. Ms. Mary has been integral in applying for and securing the various grants that you hear about at our public needs, and we're very grateful for her dedication to our schools and to our students. 10.23 is a sidebar agreement to the Hoboken Administrator and Supervisory Association contract, and it adds stipends, a stipend for the position of Assistant to the Athletic Director in the amount of $96,000. And that is the agenda. One additional item I want to bring up is we, as we discuss often in governance, it's the enrollment and updates on enrollment. The committee discussed the current and comparative enrollment numbers from this year and last year. Specifically, we're seeing right now a 286 student increase in the district from PK through 12. So that's all the way from 3K all the way through 12th grade over last year at this time. Last year's aggregate enrollment numbers for PK through 12 ended at about 2,501 students. Well, the start of the coming year is currently showing a enrollment of 3,000. Oh, that is wrong. Anyway, it's a 286 student increase. And always because we have nobody enrollment, that number may fluctuate and could increase at any time or decrease. Sorry.
And that is my report. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Katnadori. Now we'll turn it over to Ms. Norwood for Wellness.
Thank you. The Wellness Committee met on Thursday, August 22nd. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katnadori, and myself. There are no Wellness items on the agenda, however, the committee discussed a number of items. The district will be participating in a Thanksgiving food drive in partnership with Hoboken Community Center. Each school will be collecting items representing a part of a traditional Thanksgiving meal. These items will then be repackaged into a complete meal for families in need. The district will be testing no-waste food bins for each cafeteria. By law, students receiving hot lunch are required to take certain items, many of which are prepackaged, such as milk. If they do not want these items, in the future, they will put these items that are unopened and packaged into the new bins instead of the garbage. This effort will not only reduce food waste, but will also allow children that are still hungry after eating their lunch to take additional food items without additional charges. Vaping is a national problem among young adults. The Hoboken High School and Hoboken Middle School Student Codes of Conduct expressly prohibit smoking of any kind on school property, including vaping and eat cigarettes. As a student health protection initiative, the district will be rolling out the installation of vape detectors in the Hoboken High School bathrooms. The district will be offering CPR or first aid certification for staff. The program will be free, voluntary, and held on a weekend. This will be in addition to training provided to purchase. Finally, for years, the district has been providing menstrual products to students. The New Jersey Department of Education has begun an initiative to provide reimbursement to school districts for menstrual products, and the district has signed up for the program. Thank you very much.
Ms. Good. I just want to give the correct numbers.
Thank you.
So enrollment for last year was at 3,501, and that's PK through 12. And for this coming year, it's showing us 3,787 right now. One other thing I wanted to mention as a result of the final, I have the right numbers, is that our current for 24, 25 is actually outpacing the projections from our 2021 demographic study. I just wanted to bring up that important point because we are there or above it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katnadori. So I really cannot believe that we are here at the end of August and that in a little more than a week, the hallways here at Hoboken High School, as well as the four other district school buildings and all of the pre-K sites, will be filled with students and teachers, excited about all the possibilities promised by the start of new school year for 2024 to 2025. And just even saying that number out loud seems a little, makes me feel older, seems a little shocking. But I'm so glad and grateful to Dr. Johnson for sharing a high-level overview of the strategic planning process and long-range facility plan update that the district will be embarking on. This is incredibly important work, and it's very fitting that it gets started at the beginning of the school year with all of those promises and possibilities. We can start to think about the portrait of the graduate and all of the good things that this board and all the citizenry of Hoboken want to continue seeing here in our public schools. So I have two items to provide updates on. First, at the August 21st council meeting, there was ordinance on the agenda for first reading that was sponsored by Councilperson DeBor and Ramos, titled, it's a long one, so bear with me, "Ordinance of the City of Hoboken in the County of Hudson, New Jersey: Establishing Pilot Education Trust Accounts and Approving Contribution of a Portion of the Annual Service Charge provided to the City of Hoboken pursuant to financial agreements by and between the City of Hoboken and Monroe Center Hoboken Urban Renewal LLC and by and between the City of Hoboken and Observer Highway Urban Renewal LLC into the city's pilot education trust accounts." This first reading passed with unanimous vote. As many longtime attendees, viewers, participants in our meetings will remember, this board has engaged in an ongoing effort to realize funds from the pilot agreement for 770 House since 2019. This ordinance includes funds from that development and future funds from the NJ Connect L-Corps redevelopment by the PATH station. We are grateful to Councilperson DeBor and Ramos for their sponsorship. with her sponsorship and are cautiously optimistic that this ordinance will pass on September 4. This ordinance is the result of efforts on the part of this board, the administration, our attorney, thank you, Ms. Agnelli Ardi, and board members from the charter schools and their legal representation. I want to acknowledge that the board and our attorney worked closely with charter school leadership to get this ordinance to this very point. And that work involves a lot of listening, some compromise, and a determination to do the right thing for the students of Hoboken. I look forward to sharing the status of the ordinance and whether or not it passes at our September meeting. I also want to say a giant thank you to the Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Organization for the time they've spent here in Hoboken, recognizing not one, not two, but all five district schools as Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Lighthouse Award winners. We are honored to have the opportunity to go through and learn from this process. And being the first district in New Jersey to have every school achieve lighthouse status is a testament to all the hard work that teachers, administrators, and students of the Hoboken Public School District have been doing for many years. I personally am constantly inspired by the work that happens here on a daily basis, and I know that this recognition is just the tip of the iceberg for what this school year is going to hold for all of our students. Next, we'll move on to, concludes my report. Next, we'll go on to public comments on agenda items. All righty, with no public comments on agenda items, we move on to the present agenda. Do I have a motion? Ms. Lepes, would you call the hall?
Ms. Angley?
I am going to abstain on 6.01 and 6.02.
Ms. Cavatore? Yes. Ms. Delore?
I have known down that this will pass, and thank you, everybody, for volunteering for the theater department that I have to abstain because I am one of those volunteers. So, I will abstain from 10.12. Yes, and everything else.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Ron?
Yes.
Ms. Cowan?
Yeah.
Ms. Mr. Putville?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
I'm abstaining on 11:08 and 11:09, and yes, on the rest of this.
And Ms. McGurk?
To abstain on 6.01 and 10.12, and yes, on everything else.
I should pass this.
Thank you, Ms. Lepes. Do we have any speakers signed up for public comments on our agenda items?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Lepes. We are going to be, going into executive session for purposes of discussing legal matters that are covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking any action, so we'll just be coming back in order to close the meeting. We will be approximately one hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion. I say.
Did you, did, we can, we can, can we walk back for motion?
Sure.
All right, may I have a motion to reopen public portion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pica Pietra?
I didn't know I was supposed to sign up. I apologize. I'll be glad. Good evening, everyone. As you know, my name is Robin Pica Pietra, and I am the most senior principal in the district, proudly serving Hoboken High School. I am also the president of the Hoboken Administrators and Supervisors Association. All five of our schools earned the National Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Lighthouse Award, the highest distinction from prestigious organization, and I just want to provide some background. While we have received an almost overwhelming outpouring of congratulatory outreach, there have been a few members of the public of a former administrative employee who have shown less than supportive comments and actions. As a result, and on behalf of the administrative team, I will provide the overview of our journey prior to the district-wide celebration on September 15, and official receipt of awards at the Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Conference in Orlando in early December. Back in November 2023, my colleague Juliana Addy, principal of Connors Elementary School, shared with the superintendent of schools that we wanted to attend the 2023 Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Conference in Orlando, Florida, to learn more about the organization and about their school improvement and onsite validation process and recognition award program. The superintendent approved our attendance at this conference, sending myself, Juliana Addy, and Ryan Soraque, the principal of Hoboken Middle School. Our attendance was paid for out of the ARP ESSR grant. At this conference, the three of us attended a multitude of professional development workshops. We met principals from across the country, interested in progress and continuous school improvement efforts, just like those in our district. We felt empowered. We also attended a meeting about the Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence On-Site Validation Process. It was great to learn about the nine key performance indicators that the organization evaluates if a school signed on to this process. The nine KPIs, or key performance indicators, are student focus and support, school organization and culture, challenging standards and curriculum, active teaching and learning, technology integration, professional community leadership and educational vitality, and school-family-community partnerships. When we returned from this conference, we turned KPI information to Marty Shannon, principal of Wallace Elementary School, and Charles Bartlett, the principal of Brandt Elementary School, and met with the superintendent and assistant superintendent. We were all in. All five of our schools wanted to go through the Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence On-Site Validation Process. There have been a few questions about the onsite process and why we had to pay for it. Similar to all accreditation processes, there is a fee. The fee covers travel expenses for the assessor, time spent on the process analyzing both quantitative and qualitative data, along with professional development provided the months that, during the months that the process is taking place, and the professional review of the rubric based on district evidence. The cost for each school to go through the process is $6,500, and it was well worth it, just as if we would have paid to go through the middle states accreditation process, in which there is also a fee. There is not a principal in this district or one that we know are connected to in the network that does not agree that this process, these, that the processes such as, sorry, that does not agree that processes such as these are powerful. In order to get the process started, each principal has to complete and submit a summative form. Once we did so, the district was invoiced and paid, and the process began. Someone from outside our school community emailed the Blue Ribbon Organization asking who applied for us. I thought that was another question. We applied. Each principal submitted a summative form for their own school. The individual also wanted to know who paid for the process. Each principal used ARP ESSR, Purchase Professional Services Grant Funds to go through this process. Once we signed on to this process, each school committed to the following evaluatory, evaluatory actions. Online survey assessment. The individual who may email the Blue Ribbon Organization asked questions about an opinion poll. It is important to note that this is not an opinion poll. This online assessment survey is a research-based tool used to determine strengths and weaknesses of schools as determined by the providers and the users. This online survey assessment was open to all internal stakeholders of the Hoboken Public School District, not a select few, all administrators, carers, guardians, students, and support staff. Number two, the onsite validation visit. All schools underwent a two-day onsite validation visit by a nationally recognized and trained principal who conducted classroom walkthroughs, interview sessions with parents, students, and staff members to validate survey results and gather evidence, including quantitative and qualitative data. This included locally administered benchmark assessments, including period grades, attendance data, AP, SCAT, COGAT, NJSLA, PSAT, SAT, Lincoln, DRA, CLBI literacy, and more concrete measures for both achievement and growth. Number three, the exit summary. All schools had an exit summary conference to review a report and action plan for future growth. Additional virtual coaching sessions were held to discuss strategies for implementing the action plan so that each school could continue to reach beyond its goals and expectations. On August 15, all five of the Hoboken Public Schools were notified by the Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence that they had earned the National Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Lighthouse Award. This is their highest distinction, and we are all very proud of this. Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence is not a, is a nonprofit 501(c) organization that has been serving schools across the nation since 2001. The organization is passionate about education and wants schools to be the very best for students. The BRSE, One-of-a-Kind Assessment Process and Surveys, provide actionable insights that can be used as the starting point for school improvement. Their comprehensive approach to helping schools includes professional development and support, best practice sharing, conferences, and networking. They do everything possible to create a path forward for all schools and all kids. This is separate from the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program, which operates through the U.S. Department of Education. This was clearly delineated in our district's press release on August 15. But to attempt to cut down or minimize our school's accomplishments is simply small, ugly, and petty. It is disrespectful to our students, our teachers, and our entire administrative team. We have worked very hard, and this was a rigorous process. In early December, we will be attending the 2024 Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Conference. Attending with me will be my four principal colleagues. Since there was a question about this as well, I am going to just put it out there. All five of us principals receive the registration fee complimentary from the Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence because of our awards. The assistant superintendent of schools and the superintendent of schools will be accompanying us as well to celebrate our district's accomplishment as being the first school district in New Jersey to have all schools to earn the distinction and to be recognized as Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Lighthouse District. Dr. Johnson will be speaking at the conference as well. For those curious minds that want to know the cost of the conference for the assistant superintendent and the superintendent of schools, it will be covered by ESSA Type 2A grant funds. Now that I have provided this full overview of the Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence process, I do hope that you join me in celebrating our schools, staff, students, and this monumental, monumental accomplishment. I know that Dr. Johnson will be announcing a district-wide celebration to distribute banners on September 15. On behalf of my principal colleagues, I hope to see you all there. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Melody Tarian, Hoboken resident and parent of incoming freshmen. First, I want to say thank you to Ms. Pica Pietra for going over that whole explanation of the, the recognition that the district was earned. of the recognition that the district was earned. It's super exciting for all of us, and I think one of the things, as I was listening to the kind of explanation that Ms. Pec provided, was that this is a reflection in like a moment in time of all the work that's been happening in our district for the last fifteen or so years, that every single year, every single month, all ongoing, ongoing, there's some new achievement that either our students, our faculty, our schools, our district are accomplishing, and this feels like a summation of all of those accomplishments and representation and, ooh, ribbon, you know, that shows, you know, everything that we've been doing. I'm so proud of our district and everybody in our district community for all the work that has been put into, whether it's curriculum, whether it's student achievement, whether it's extracurricular, whether it's sports, clubs, everything that we do to create a well-rounded educational experience for our students that needs to, knock this stuff over, sorry, needs to be able to get recognized in this way, and I'm so proud of all of you sitting here, our teachers, our families, our students, all of our staff, and all of our administrators, so thanks for the work that you're doing and congratulations.
Any further speakers? We will be going with.
Good evening, Roseanne Musachi. I would like to echo what Melanie said and certainly what Robin said. When I found out about this achievement, I had emailed Dr. Johnson, and she had said some very lovely things about the staff, and I said I happily accepted congratulations on behalf of the staff, but I also wanted to recognize her because I have been, I've been, I've worked in Hoboken and practiced in my whole life, and I know what the challenges that the public school district went through. And when I first started teaching, just as a, as an aside, I remember they would, we had brought the Johns Hopkins program in, and they were thinking about moving it to Connors to try to build up Connors, and when they did that, a lot of the parents decided that they wanted to send their kids there. And so, the district went through a lot of different challenges, school-wide and citywide, and, you know, I taught the elementary, lower elementary level, and I had kids in first and second grade, and then they were gone. And so, that's not the district that many of you know today. Many of the newer parents wouldn't recognize the district that I knew growing up and certainly when I first started teaching. So, this is a great honor for the whole district and certainly for the teachers. I mean, you know, I represent them, so I give them a lot of props, but it's a collaborative effort, and it's the vision of the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, all the administration, all the hard work that everybody has put into making this district such a premier district and a district that not only we are proud of, because we were always proud of the work that we did, but a district that, I mean, when I hear people from charter schools saying like, I'm sending my child to Hoboken High, it just gives me such a feeling because that was never the case. So, I think we all need to give ourselves a pat on the back and take a lot of pride in this achievement, and I just want to say thank you to everyone for all the support in making Hoboken the district that it has become, so thank you.
If there are no further speakers, I'll get to anyone else left. We will be going into executive session now for the purpose of discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking actions. We will be coming back to close the meeting. Will be approximately half hour, forty-five minutes or so. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Lopez, please call the roll.
Ms. Angley. Ms. Kattan Torrey, yes. Ms. Delara.
Yeah.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Khan.
Yeah.
Ms. Fluppo.
Yes.
Ms. Norwood.
Yes.
And Ms. McGurk.
Yeah.